Good afternoon. We have two facility district meetings we're going to start with, so please bear with us. They'll go quickly, but I didn't want to catch you off-guard as to what was going on. So I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, July 24th, 2018, and this is a meeting of the Hacienda Community Facilities District. Let's call roll, please.
Chairman Mangarelli.
Present.
Vice Chairman Orr.
Here.
Board Member Blair.
Yes.
Board Member Good.
Here.
Board Member Lamerson.
Here.
Board Member Scholl.
Here.
And Board Member Sishka is excused. We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Let's proceed to Item 3A.
Approval of the May 9th, 2017, and the August 8th, 2017, Hacienda Community Facilities District minutes.
Okay, is there a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the Hacienda Community Facilities District minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion second, please vote.
Steve, if you voted no.
Steve.
Motion passes 6-0.
It's my first day.
All right, yeah. We'll give you a pass. Item 3B, please.
Public hearing in adoption of budget for Hacienda Community Facilities District for fiscal year 2019. Adopt Resolution Number 46 of the District Board of Hacienda Community Facilities District, Yavapai County, Arizona, finally determining and adopting estimates of proposed expenditures for the fiscal year 2019, and declaring that the same shall constitute the budget for the Hacienda Community Facilities District for said fiscal year.
Thank you.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and second to close the public hearing. All please vote. All right, moving on. Next motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 46, setting the fiscal year 19 budget for Hacienda Community Facilities District.
Second.
We have a motion and second, please vote.
Motion passes 6-0.
All right, this meeting is adjourned.
I like this, this is fun.
I'd like to call this meeting to order again. Today is Tuesday, July 24th, and this is a meeting of the Hacienda Community Facilities District. Let's do roll call.
Chairman Mangarelli.
Present.
Vice Chairman Orr.
Here.
Board Member Blair.
Yes.
Board Member Good.
Here.
Board Member Lamerson.
Here.
Board Member Scholl.
Here.
Board Member Sishka is excused. We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to Item 3A.
Approval of the draft May 9th, 2017, and August 8th, 2017, Hacienda Community Facilities Number Two minutes.
Are you presenting, Mark, or just?
I'm just here for questions.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
How do we approve the minutes with the new council when the old council's one that was in the minutes? When we have four new people.
I would refer to the district lawyer.
I'm just curious.
You know, this board sits as a body, it's not really individual, so you just have to, you know, hate to say this, but you have to accept that the minutes are accurate, sufficiently accurate, and it's a formality to approve them. That way, technically, they don't become a public record until they're approved, otherwise they're considered a draft, so this just makes it a public record. You're not avowing that these are true and correct if you weren't actually here when you read them, you're just approving them as trusting that the board clerk got the minutes right at the time.
Okay.
And frankly, the board clerk was somebody who was different, too.
I was just curious, because you don't get enough to say, you know.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve Hacienda Community Facilities District Number Two minutes as presented.
Motion second, please vote.
Motion passes 6-0.
Item 3B.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing. Oh, you need to read it first, sorry.
That's okay. Public hearing in adoption of budget for Hacienda Community Facilities District Number Two for fiscal year 2019. Adopt Resolution Number 23 of the District Board of Hacienda Community Facilities District Number Two, Yavapai County, Arizona, finally determining and adopting estimates of proposed expenditures for the fiscal year 2019, and declaring that the same shall constitute the budget for the Hacienda Community Facilities District Number Two for said fiscal year.
Mayor, I move to close public hearing.
I'll second that.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I understand, Mark, that this facility district is in the process of retiring most of its assessments for capital projects, and I see that we're moving from about $75,000 in a budget down to $33,000, of which $10,000 continues to be audits and insurance. So it seems to me like we're getting pretty close to disbanding or dissolving this district.
Thank you, Councilman Mark Woodfell, District Treasurer. The districts are both capital project districts, they were formed to build capital projects, and then they are put together to pay off those amounts. Yes, both districts are close to being completed. The first district we looked at has three more years. This district, I believe, has six more years. The insurance and audit expense is a contingency, we have not spent that level for years, and with the refunding we did last May, there is no requirement that there is a separate annual audit of just this district or financial statements. These districts are part of the city of Prescott, they are part of our comprehensive annual financial report, and as such are part of our audit as well. The bond documents beforehand required a separate statement each year and a separate audit, which was an additional expense which really did not provide value.
I just didn't want to see that the residents were going to have to get an assessment just to pay an insurance and an audit bill.
No, sir, the only assessments are to pay off the bonds that were used for the capital.
So three and six years to go.
Yes, I believe it's six, pretty sure.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we'll hear a motion.
May I move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Did we do that?
I'm not sure, did we? Okay, I'm sorry, the number two.
I'm having deja vu here.
Exactly. Didn't we do this already? Move to adopt Resolution Number 23, setting the FY19 budget for Hacienda Community Facilities District Number Two.
I'll second that.
Motion and second, please vote.
Motion passes 6-0.
All right, this meeting of the district is adjourned. Today is, again, Tuesday, July 24th, and this is now Prescott City Council voting session. Let's see, do you have any announcements or introductions?
I do, Mayor, thank you very much. Hello, everyone, it's, last time we met here for the voting meeting, it was our recommendation to the Department of Transportation that they choose United Airlines for our EAS, actually SkyWest, doing business as United Airlines. So that was our recommendation, and we're pleased to announce, it's been all over the news, so it's no surprise, that United Airlines will service United Express, will land here from Denver on August the 29th, which is a Wednesday, they will land about 1:10, and we're going to ask that our citizens turn out, and we're going to do a great ribbon cutting at noon at the airport inside the terminal, and then the mayor, Councilman Sishka, manager Michael Lamar, they're going to come off the airplane, we'll do a ribbon cutting there, and then we're going to fly to LAX. So we ask that you join in what's going to be a really fun ribbon cutting. We'll be at the airport, and I think you'll be really happy that you're there. So noontime, Wednesday, August 29th, join us. Thank you.
No, that's great, and I would say, you know, go to united.com and buy lots of tickets, we need to support our airline. I know some people are having trouble finding Prescott, but if you type in PRC and hit enter, you will get Prescott to come up.
I think it's a great thing, because when you need to go to LA, and you can get a round-trip ticket for $108, including tax, that is something that's very beneficial for this community.
Thanks for that. All right, we're going to do an invocation. Reverend Dave Graff is here from Prescott Life Church, and then I will lead us in the pledge.
It's great to be here. That was fun, whatever we just did. Good job, and thanks for bringing in the airlines, appreciate that. Let's pray. Lord, we ask that you'd come and be with us, we ask for clarity of mind, we ask for our city to prosper and do well. Bless those who come with business and ideas, and may they go forward in your name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dave. Let's do roll call, please.
Mayor Mangarelli.
Present.
Mayor Protim Orr.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilman Lamerson.
Councilwoman Scholl. Here.
Councilman Sishka is excused. We have a quorum.
Thank you. We have a couple proclamations.
Item A, Purple Heart Recognition Day, August 7th, 2018.
So if you're in the crowd and you're a Purple Heart recipient, please come forward, and Councilman Good will read the proclamation.
If I could walk that far.
Hi, Councilman Good. For those of you who aren't aware, the Purple Heart is a military medal awarded to members of the armed forces of the United States who've been wounded by an instrument of war in the hands of the enemy, or posthumously to the next of kin in the name of those who were killed in action or died of their wounds, received in action, and it is specifically a combat decoration. August 7th is recognized throughout the United States as Purple Heart Day, and we're privileged to have a couple of certainly very worthy recipients in our community who we have the honor to recognize today. Dee Dejonker, first name is Maurice, he's a friend of mine, we have breakfast almost every Friday morning, he's had waffles and more, along with some other veterans. Dee is kind of an exceptional individual, exceptional veteran. He was, he received two Purple Hearts, both during combat in World War II, personally awarded to him by General Patton. Dee fought in the North Africa campaign at Kasserine Pass. He was involved in the invasion of Sicily, the capture of Palermo and Messina. He went on to be involved in the amphibious landings at Henzio, fought at Monte Cassino, and then went forward to the invasion of southern France at Operation Dragoon, fought all the way up through western Germany to the Ardennes Forest, and was involved in the Battle of the Bulge and crossed the Rhine. What an amazing guy. Gary Sheldon is, has been our chaplain at the American Legion Post Six here in Prescott. He was wounded in combat during his Vietnam tour in 1968 and 69, and when I got there in 1970, I told him he should have finished up the job, but I had to finish off the war for those guys. So as you can tell, I very much respect and revere these guys. So whereas we have freedom to maintain our way of life because of the contributions and sacrifices of military service members, and whereas the citizens of Prescott have great admiration and the utmost gratitude for the men and women who selflessly serve our country in the armed forces, and whereas many men and women have sacrificed their lives in battle while serving our nation, and were awarded the Purple Heart Medal posthumously, and whereas many citizens in our community were wounded in combat and awarded the Purple Heart Medal in recognition of their bravery and service to our nation, and whereas we recognize and honor the sacrifice of our nation's men and women who were wounded or killed while protecting our freedoms. Now therefore, Greg Mangarelli, Mayor of the city of Prescott, does hereby recognize August 7th as Purple Heart Recognition Day, and witness thereof, he heretofore set his hand and caused the seal of the city of Prescott to be affixed this 24th day of July 2018. Please acknowledge our veterans. Would you like to say a couple of words?
Sure. I would echo what's been said here already today, that at the VA, we're very honored and privileged to take care of veterans such as these two gentlemen every single day, and that is our mission, and we take it very seriously, and we're very proud to be able to do that, so I wanted to say thank you to these two gentlemen, they're wonderful.
Thank you for your service.
Item 6B.
Item B, Child Support Awareness Month, August 2018.
Thank you, I believe we have someone from the Department of Economic Security Division of Child Support Services. Thank you for coming, what's your name?
Tammy Clark.
Thank you, Tammy. Child Support Awareness Month, August 2018. Whereas the state of Arizona joins the nation in recognizing August as a Child Support Awareness Month, and whereas Child Support Awareness Month salutes the diligent working parents who safeguard their children's future, and whereas community partnerships serve children and families through a variety of programs while engaging individual responsibility and working toward greater self-sufficiency, and whereas a child who receives emotional and financial support is much more likely to feel safe and secure, and are better equipped to have the courage to do their very best in their lives. Whereas strengthening individuals and families promotes the safety and well-being of children, provides stability, improves the lives of children, and provides opportunities for families to be enabled and enhance their children's future. And finally, the Department of Economic Security Division of the Child Support Services is committed to putting children first, as well as being an overall champion for economic growth and opportunity. Therefore, Greg Mangarelli, the mayor of the city of Prescott, doesn't hereby proclaim August 2018 as Child Support Awareness Month, and thank you. Would you like to say something?
I just would like to thank the mayor and council for the proclamation, and thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you for what you do.
No problem.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Okay, item seven, presentations.
Granite Mountain Hot Shots Memorial.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Alexa Scholl, and usually I'm with you behind the dais, but this afternoon I'm representing the Granite Mountain Hot Shots Memorial Partnership, and we would like to formally present our design and artist to you. So back in 2015, the city of Prescott endorsed the Granite Mountain Hot Shots Memorial Partnership as the official organization to commission the memorial to the 19 fallen Granite Mountain Hot Shots. Additionally, in 2015, the Yavapai County Board of Supervisors allotted 400 square feet of space on the Yavapai County Courthouse Plaza, and since that time, we have put together a request for proposal. We also took comment from the public in terms of what they would like to see incorporated into a memorial design. And before I introduce our design, I'd like to thank Pat McCarty, Celeste Gordon, and Paul Roberts, who are members of our board for being here today and showing support for our beautiful design that we are really excited about. So this is what the memorial will look like from the front. Our artist is mostly known for her western sculptures, and she will nail the sculpture, we're confident of that. Behind the bronze hot shot is two granite slabs, they are slightly bowed, the peak on the left-hand side is 16 feet tall, the peak on the right-hand side is 13 and a half feet tall. The bronze will be size plus 10%, which will make him about seven feet tall, and he is standing on a foot-tall pedestal. We sent actual used hot shot equipment, an actual Granite Mountain Hot Shots belt buckle, and actual equipment that they would have used down to our artist, who lives in Sonoyta, to put on a model, so that our bronze is as accurate as possible to what those men would have been wearing when they were out on Yarnell Hill. Below the bronze, it says Granite Mountain Hot Shots, and it's difficult to see, but below that it says Esse Quam Vidiari, which is their Latin motto. And when we put a call-out to the public, we tallied, oh, I think they want the lights down.
Oh. Oh, it's right in the front.
He's new.
Yeah, right there. There we go. Well, that's better.
So when we put a call-out to the public for comments on design concepts, one of the things that the public wanted the most included into this design concept was their Latin motto, and so our artist has included that in her design. And if you have any questions along the way, please feel free. And then this is what the memorial will look like from the back. Another highly requested item that was part of the design concept was the alligator juniper that the hot shot saved just days before the tragedy at Yarnell Hill. So the entire back portion of the two granite spires will be engraved with an actual photo of the alligator juniper out on, right next to Granite Mountain. And then to the left below the tree is a bench, so that visitors can symbolically sit under the juniper tree that the hot shot saved. All of this is sitting on a spot that is made out of 18-inch by 18-inch granite tiles, and then surrounding the tiles are pavers that will match the existing pavers at the courthouse, and the curbing will match the existing curbing as well. And one of the things that we really wanted as a board was lighting in nighttime to be incorporated into our design concept, and so at night, the names will be uplit, and the bronze statue will look more like a silhouette than anything, and our artist said that she wants the silhouette of the bronze to look like any one of the 19 men at night. And we will also have the back portion uplit as well. So now we have renderings, and we are fundraising. We have already seen generous donations from community members. At their first meeting in July, the county agreed to accept perpetual ownership and pay for perpetual maintenance upon completion, and they also agreed to financially assist with installation. We also received a very generous donation from the Yavapai Prescott Indian Tribe earlier this year, and so we are currently fundraising, and we are hopeful that the memorial will be completed for the sixth anniversary. However, if that doesn't work with our timeline, we will take all the time necessary to make sure that this memorial is properly completed and installed. So with that, I will take any questions.
Well, thank you, Alex. I want to sincerely thank you, and Pat, and Paul, and the whole partnership, the team, for your work. We all know this was a daunting task, and I think you've done an excellent job capturing what is pleasing to the families and the community, and it's going to be a real, I hope, a great place of healing and remembrance of our beloved 19. So thank you all for giving your time. I know it's been long in coming, but I believe, you know, the amount of time that you took was appropriate, given the type of project you had in front of you. So thank you all so much for your work. Questions, comments from the council?
Well, I would just like to say, very proud of you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you so much, Alex, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great job. All right, let's move on to consent agenda. I would like to pull Item C. Any other members want to pull anything from consent?
Mr. Mayor, I agree, I wanted to pull C as well, and I also wanted to pull E and G just for discussion.
Okay, so so far we have Items C, E, and G pulled. Any others? Okay. Entertaining motion?
Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 8A, 8B, 8D, and 8F.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second, please vote.
Motion passes 6-0.
All right. Item C is Jim, Jim is here. Jim Robb is our consultant, economic development consultant, and he works part-time for the city, and he has been focused really on technology, among a few other areas, and I just wanted to pull this so that we could recognize Jim's work here with the public. We have some very high-profile companies that he's worked in concert with a few others, but he's really been the lead with Reissa Wearables. You see Reissa at Costco, if you've been there, they do the 3D-printed insoles, and then also, a really big announcement that's just coming out is Aviation, an Israeli-owned company that's building an airplane that's driven through electricity, electric motors. And so there's a lot more that we could talk about that Jim does here, but I just wanted to recognize him for his work, and it's a huge benefit to our city, the jobs that he's bringing to our city is tremendous, and the kind of exposure that we're going to have, and these are all very good, high-paying jobs, an industry that doesn't require water. So it's a very good fit. He's partnered well with our higher institutions in the city, among other different businesses and community members, and so I just wanted to thank Jim publicly, so. Councilman Good?
Mr. Mayor, I want to echo everything that you said. In my professional career, I've worked extensively with business development, hired many, many people to be involved in finding and developing new business opportunities, and especially when you compare the investment that the city made in the G-Prep organization, the amount of performance results, the quality of the businesses that have been attracted here by Mr. Robb is just outstanding, no question about it. I mentioned to the city manager, if we had to hire in the open market someone who could produce these kinds of results, we'd probably be paying a heck of a lot more, so don't take that and take advantage of us, Mr. Robb, but I just commend your work, it's just been outstanding, I know it's going to continue to be outstanding. We've got other companies now that are being attracted, I think we're building a foundation of technology here that's going to kind of take off and be self-sustaining in the future, and it's going to provide so many great jobs, great high-paying jobs, the right kind of businesses that have the least impact to our community when it comes to congestion and traffic and resource demand and things like that, it's just really, really exciting, so I thank you, sir.
Councilman Good comments, I appreciate the ROI with the Robb group has been tremendous compared to some other investments that we've made in the past in terms of economic development. Any other questions or comments? I should say comments.
May I just like to say ditto and offer a motion?
Yes.
I move to approve Amendment Number Three to City Contract Number 2017-260.
Second.
We have a motion and second, please vote.
Motion passes 6-0.
All right, let's move to Item E. And Council- And Councilman Good, do you have some questions or...
Yes, sir. I had a question regarding this particular piece of equipment. It's not an insignificant amount by any means, $80,413.43. I just wanted to be assured that this is a real need for the city and not particularly a want. So I'd like to find out why this is needed and how it's going to improve our performance in this area. So if you can just explain to me how it's not going to be an additional increase in our equipment, and it's really going to pay for itself.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Mike Carr, Fleet Services. Thank you for the question, Councilman Good. Just to preface that information, the, all the assets that we purchase each year are reviewed by the Fleet Asset Review Board. The department heads and their supervisors and superintendents, they submit a request, a list of apparatus and vehicles that need to be replaced or repaired, or new additions of equipment. The review board goes over the requirement and what makes that piece of equipment necessary for purchase, whether or not it's actually needed. This particular piece of equipment, and Craig can speak to it as well, is more of a fit. We try to purchase equipment that fits the needs of what we're doing. And we were talking about, going back and forth about getting a backhoe, another backhoe for this division, and we determined that the backhoe wasn't the right-sized piece of equipment. It was too big for them to get into some of the tight areas that they use, can cause damage to the asphalt and concrete areas where they work, and then doesn't have the small enough footprint to use in most of the tight areas. So that being said, it also has some uses in other places in the city that other departments would be able to take advantage of having that piece of equipment in the city, since it's unique to us and it would be the first city-owned excavator. So that was kind of the deciding factors for the Fleet Asset Review Board as to why we were in a favor of purchasing this type of equipment. But I'm sure Craig could answer some of the questions on the uses specifically for it.
Thank you, Mike. Craig Dot Seth, Public Works. And yes, to reiterate, this is not an additional piece of equipment. It will be a replacement for an existing backhoe, but we're purchasing or requesting to purchase specialized equipment, this with the mini excavator. Currently, when we have projects that we need to use a mini excavator, we've been renting them. For instance, in the last two and a half years, our rental expenses in Public Works have been about $34,000 for rental equipment, and about $15,000 of that has gone directly to an excavator like this. When we run into a project right now where we don't have the mini excavator, many times we'll stumble through that project, being less efficient time-wise. We end up with the backhoes. They cause more damage many times to when we're in landscaping areas, you know, sod areas, things like that. Mike mentioned damaged pavement. So when we don't have a mini excavator available or able to rent one at, you know, at every use, the need, then we'll, we manage. But ultimately, it costs us more time and money that way. So then that is less efficient on project completion. So ultimately, yes, this specialized piece will help us on efficiency, so it'll save us time and money in the long and the short term, as well as to not add additional equipment to the fleet.
How long do you expect this piece of equipment to be? What's its lifetime?
This piece of equipment should be able to go anywhere from 15 to 20 years pretty easy, especially the way they're maintained.
On rental costs alone, we should be able to pay for it in five or six years probably, and then be in the bonus period after that.
It may be closer to 10 years for the payback. Well, we only have known costs in regards to rental costs. We don't have a number to the efficiency loss like right now.
I know you're trying to improve the number of projects that are started and completed, and this would certainly help get these jobs done faster.
Yes.
Right there, I'm satisfied. Thank you very much. I'd support this, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Entertained a motion?
Mayor, I move to purchase one each 2018 Caterpillar 305-E2 hydraulic excavator from Empire Cat using City of Tucson Contract Number 120377 pricing in the total amount of $80,413.43, contract number 2019-053.
Second?
Motion second. Please vote.
Motion passes 6-0.
Okay. Item G, Councilman Good?
I'm sorry that our city clerk, Maureen, isn't with us today. The reason I decided to pull this is just I was very impressed with the analysis that she provided to the council, especially when we're looking at computer software programs. I've had a lot of professional experience with programs. Sometimes you think you've got a bargain, and then you find out that the support costs to get specialists in to make the program work the way you want it to sometimes will exceed the cost of the program itself. So it appears that our current Highland Ambe system is such an animal, so to speak. With this new proposal, over a five-year period of time, our costs should be below half of what we have been paying because we're going to get that support included in the cost of the contract. So I just wanted to commend the analysis she put together, which really makes it easy for us to make a decision on an expenditure of this nature. So I think we're going to get a much better program, much better support, and a lower cost. So from that perspective, I would support this proposal.
Very good. Entertained a motion?
Mayor, I approve, I approve, I make a motion to approve City Contract Number 2019-057 with Doc United Imaging in an amount not to exceed $60,648.60.
Second.
Have a motion second. Please vote.
Motion passes 6-0.
All right, let's move on to item 9A, please.
Item A and B, Adopt Ordinance Number 2018-1621 of the Mayor and Council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the purchase of easements from Prescott School District Number One for the Mingus Douglas Lift Station Abandonment Project, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said purchase. And to adopt ordinance number 2018-1623 of the Mayor and Council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the dedication of the right-of-way to the public and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said dedication.
Okay, entertained a motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt City Ordinance Number 2018-1621 and 2018-1623.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Please vote.
Motion passes 6-0.
Okay, move on to item 10A.
Mayor and Council, this is a Series 15 Special Event Liquor License application for the Yavapai College Foundation for the 50th Anniversary Celebration located at the Career and Technical Center on 220 Ruger Road. This event is going to be held on Saturday, September 29, 2018, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
Entertained a motion?
Mayor, I move to forward Special Event Liquor License Application 10.8.1 to the Arizona State Liquor Board with a recommendation of approval.
Second.
Motion second. Please vote.
Motion passes 6-0.
All right, let's move on to item 11A in the regular agenda, please.
Item A, Adopt Resolution Number 2018-1649 of the Mayor and Council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the City of Prescott City to enter into an intergovernmental agreement, IGA, City Contract Number 2019-047 with the Yavapai County Flood Control District for financial contributions from the district to the city for fiscal year 2018 to 2019, and authorizing the mayor and staff to take any and all steps necessary to accomplish the above.
Thank you. Very good. This is Steve Oros, Public Works. This item is a, the formal agreement between the city and the Yavapai County Flood Control District to transfer the $600,000 a year that comes from the Flood Control District to the city to address drainage projects within the city. This is the city's part of the agreement. The county does the same ratification of the IGA, and then that allows us to request the funds from the county as we develop the projects. Over the years, we've developed a menu approach with the county to say, here's a list of projects that we are thinking of doing this year. We may allocate the funds to one or more of these projects. In years past, when we had specific projects, if something went awry, we'd have to go back and amend the agreement. Both of us felt that it was a very good approach to offer a menu of projects versus we're going to do A and B, and something happens, and we have to come back to both boards and council for modification. So if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Questions or comments from the council?
So Steve, thank you, Mayor. So you're saying of these eight items, you will choose from, so this is really pretty open?
It is.
Okay.
And we do have priorities to try to get the construction projects that we have...
Washington and...
Washington, South Washington and East Goodwin has some drainage improvements that we want to use these funds for. Although there's options for funds on some of those projects, whereas the Stormwater Master Plan, the Levy Analysis, and the Communities Rating System Analysis, CRS, which is part of the FEMA insurance program that we have for the city, those funds can only be used for those projects. We don't have another funding source.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. I kind of had misunderstood a little bit about that. Thank you very much.
Not a problem.
Other questions or comments? If not, I'll hear a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 2018-1649.
Second.
Motion second. Please vote.
Motion passes 6-0.
Item 11B, please.
Thank you.
Adopt Resolution Number 2018-1650 of the Mayor and Council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, approving Amendment Number Three to City Contract Number 2014-16083, and authorizing the mayor and staff to take any and all necessary steps, excuse me, any and all steps necessary to accomplish the above.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Leslie Grazer, Water Resource Manager. I'm providing a map just so you know where this contract is actually landing on the land. So we're sitting probably right about here in council chambers. We take 89 up towards Palden, the Big Chino area, out Big Chino Water, Big Chino Ranch Road, out to the ranch. So this is a joint funding agreement, which is a subcontract to your Comprehensive Agreement Number One, which is a three-party contract that includes the city, the town of Prescott Valley, and SRP. We're looking to continue this contract with the USGS to address some data sites located... Oops, I had to pull this down a little bit, if you can see. Reference again is the city's property right here. There's four actually on the land there that they would like to continue to collect data at because they don't have three years' worth of data. This contract will also extend the data collection at the Williamson Valley Gauge and groundwater monitoring that's being done by the USGS. The total cost of the contract is $155,025. The portion that's the responsibility of the Comprehensive Agreement Number One parties is $94,850. The city's cost rolls down to $34,380, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Leslie. Councilman Blair?
I'm counting diamonds on the screen. So the question I have is that you talk about sites, monitoring sites. Can you explain to the public, are those monitoring sites actual wells that are being drilled in the ground to do certain things? And in that case, when you respond to that, there's a number of those sites that we have on the water ranch. How many active sites and wells do we have to do our due justice of evaluation?
Okay, those are really good questions because I look at this a lot, and everything looks terribly familiar to me, and I can understand why it wouldn't be to others. So the city has invested in these lines here. Those are geophysics. It tells you about the structure of the ground below that the modelers need to know to build the model correctly. Recently, we finished up, we had a 1 point, I think it was $1.1 million contract for well drilling, and these were for monitor wells. So on this map, these pink dots represent the five on the east side of the highway, and then as you move up, there's two more in these locations. There has been an existing collection of wells that are with the Arizona Department Water Resources, and they're scientific databases, and they have the manpower to go out and monitor those things on an annual basis, if some are that way, or twice a year. The diamonds, you said you were counting a lot of diamonds, and I have a better picture, but we can probably zoom in a little bit. The diamonds, as much as possible, are co-located with a well because then it starts telling you about your storage properties. So the diamonds, if we can try to get to that one, the plan in the contract was for 33. We're at 28. And so it was tried to fit in where there might be data deficiencies. As you noted, on the ranch, there's quite a bit of activity, and it's much easier to permit activities on your own land than to, well, I shouldn't say that. We've been fairly lucky, I think, with a lot of the landowners to allow the city to come up and put location, or put data collection in key locations. But there's also, it's the checkerboarding with state lands and federal lands, so you need to seek those permitting processes as well. And the last, but not least, is the SRP equipment, which is the green.
So as bottom line, we have 30-some wells out there?
The state has way more than that. Those that are under our ownership right now are seven monitor wells.
Okay, but the reason why I'm bringing it up, I want people to understand that the Big Chino Water Ranch and the due diligence of the community with Prescott Valley and SRP, we're working hard to do an underlying analysis of the water basin, what it means, how much we can pump, the effect of Verde, and all those types of things. I think what we're doing is creating science here that we can hang our hat on, so I appreciate you bringing this forward.
Happy to.
Other questions or comments? Entertained a motion?
May I move to adopt Resolution Number 2018-1650?
Second.
Motion second. Please vote.
Motion passes 6-0.
Moving on to item 11C.
Item C, Adopt Ordinance Number 2018-1624 of the Mayor and Council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, levying upon the assessed valuation of the property within the City of Prescott, subject to taxation a certain sum upon each $100 of valuations sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be required in the annual budget, less the amount estimated to be received from other sources of revenue, providing funds for various bond redemptions for the purpose of paying interest upon bonded indebtedness, and providing funds for the general municipal expenses for all, excuse me, all for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2019.
I think Maureen put more verbiage in there when she was gone.
I think she did that on purpose, Mayor.
Like she's picking on you. All right. Mark?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Mark Woodfill, Budget and Finance Director. Exciting FY19 budget season is coming to a close with this action. This is our last action. You'll remember, two weeks ago, on the 10th, we had public hearings for our budget and other things, including our property tax levy. Obviously, that was the public hearing, but I'm sure, Council, if anybody was interested, could talk to this. This ordinance today establishes... This ordinance today establishes the dollar amount that we will receive from property tax, $1,748,005. This is up $38,030 from last year. Excuse me, that increase is related to new construction being added to the rolls. It's no increase for existing because of the revenue projections this year. There was no need to increase taxes on the, above what they were. On the bottom of the screen there, you can see the last 10 years' worth of property tax rates. As you can see, they continue to go down as we don't take on that additional increases we don't need. Again, the graph we've seen way too many times this year. On a $200,000 house, it's going to be about $54 this next year of city tax related to fire district just outside our borders. That would be $555 in tax. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions or comments from the council?
Yeet.
Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mayor, I would like to move to adopt ordinance number 2018-1624. And Mark, good job.
Second.
Motion second, please vote.
Motion passes six zero.
Item 11D.
Award city contract to FCI Constructors for the southeastern stair tower replacement.
Much shorter title, right?
Wasn't it though?
Mike Carr, Facilities Maintenance. This item requests approval to award the one Government Procurement Alliance Job Order Contract to FCI Constructors. FCI will place portions and repair the southeast staircase and tower at the parking garage on Granite Street. The parking garage was open in 2005, and the southeast staircase and tower structure is now in need of staircase replacement due to deterioration of the pans which hold the concrete steps from weather and corrosives. Facilities Management ordered the assessment of the stairs, which was completed by Dick Fritsch Design Group, the architect of record for the original project, who designed a plan for replacement of the southeast staircase. The new stairs will be precast concrete with no metal pans to rust, therefore will last longer with minimal maintenance. The concrete will be treated with a high crete additive to repel moisture, and the internal rebar is coated in vinyl. Special inspections for the welding and the steel will be conducted by Frost Structural FCI Constructors upon approval, and per the attached proposal, will complete the construction required to replace the staircase. The parking garage is part of the general fund, and the project was included in the FY19 general fund budget. I also have some photos I'd like to share with everybody of, we did do the grand staircase on Granite Street last year through FCI Constructors. And is this on, Mark?
Yeah.
So this kind of gives you an idea of, zoom out of that a little bit, the state. On this side, we have the current staircase that's going to be replaced. There's rust. If you notice up here, water infiltrates in the cracks in here, you get the freeze thaw process and it starts to deteriorate that bond between the concrete and the metal pan frame. It allows the moisture to seep in there, and then over time, it rusts. And what we're having now is a lot of corrosion on the inner side of the pans, which I'll show you some pictures of that. On the right-hand side is the grand staircase that FCI did the repair on last year. So there's no steel pan and it's all concrete cast. And then that concrete is treated to make sure that it's not porous and no, it's less than 1% water can infiltrate the concrete. So that's that part of the project. On this side, you'll see the, on the top is the current, what FCI's done on the grand staircase where there's no metal pan underneath. It's welded frame with concrete landing pad. On the bottom is the current design of the southeast staircase with metal pan frame with concrete poured into the pan. And the spot on the bottom you see is a nice chunk of paint peeling off and rust showing underneath it. And you'll see in the last picture, you saw that the rust is seeping down the stairs and staining the concrete and kind of making it look unsightly. So beyond that, we are also repairing railing. This was a section of railing that was exposed when they sandblasted it off the paint. So essentially, that marine-based paint is holding that structure together. Once they peeled that back, they made the appropriate repairs. And we found a lot of water which had infiltrated and set inside of the structure, so that was good. Can't really see this, there's a giant hole right in here. But rust basically took out a lot of that metal structure. And on the grand staircase, they were able to go in there and replace majority of the bad components and rebuild that. And we're hoping we don't have as much damage to this southeast staircase, but we know the pans and everything, the concrete sitting is in bad shape and needs repaired. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mike. I think you're seeing the full effect of our beautiful mild forest seasons.
Absolutely.
On these stairs. Councilman Blair?
Yeah, I'm a little bit embarrassed in the fact that I sat on this council when we approved the parking garage. And from my standpoint, you know, not being in the contracting world and staircases and concrete and metal pans, I think we were sold a bill of goods. I'm a little embarrassed that we're spending close to a million dollars for 12 years. We don't live in a salt water area like Mexico where we have a huge level of rust. We have very little precipitation. And to have this kind of damage in a short period of time, frankly, again, I'm embarrassed because I didn't know what should be there and what should not. Corrugated steel steps that have holes in them where they would drain and not have the concrete or the steel would probably be a better evaluation from my standpoint. But again, I'm not in this business. Thank you for bringing this forward. It's a public safety issue. And hopefully, I've learned a lot on this council and what to do and what not to do. And I think next time something like this comes forward, I would scrutinize it myself a little bit heavier about the construction of the facility because this is really embarrassing to spend a million dollars in less than 13 years on replacing something.
And just for future reference, next year, we'll be proposing the other side, the northeast side of the staircase, which is in similar, if not worse, repair. The reason we're going with this side first, we have to, we're going to fully encapsulate it and make sure that no debris or anything can come out of there while people can still walk underneath. There's going to be a walkway still accessing the businesses over by the firehouse plaza there. But we're focusing on this side first, and then we'll, next year, we'll be looking at the northeast staircase.
What kind of warranty do we get on the replacement?
It's a one-year warranty. It's a one-year warranty.
I mean, really? That's the problem that I have with this. You know, when you start talking about structural steel and putting in steel, escape areas like on the Elks Theater and the stairs they put in there where they don't have this kind of problem, where you have water issues, concrete issues, why wouldn't we do something like that here instead of replacing millions of dollars of taxpayers' dollars because it's not designed properly? And with a one-year warranty?
And I did, we have a meeting earlier with the proposed contractor, and he stated there is additional warranties that we could purchase. We did not look at that.
Of course, you're two-year warranty.
We did not put that in our estimate of cost, but we could evaluate that. This current design, you know, I'm not an engineer as well, but there's not the same problems. This is designed to expand and contract with the weather. It's designed to repel the water, not allow the water to cause damage to the steel structure underneath. And I think I brought some pictures. So you could see, instead of having a pan, and I wish this picture came in a little clearer, on the bottom side here, there's plates that are cast into the concrete. You see one right here. And the plates are welded to a cross member. And so essentially, all you have is, the steel structure is not going to hold any water at that point. There's nothing to hold water there and allow it to corrode over time. It's got room for the water to flow and move out and get out of the joints. You're not going to have a lot of settling and corrosion in those spots. So confident that this is going to be a good solution and fix for the problem.
We won't be back here in 12 years.
I won't be.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, Mike, what is your timeline? I couldn't find that in the materials.
Sorry, should be in there. There's a document attached with the schedule, but it's going to be September 4th start, and then December 31st will be the completion for being out of there completely. So same timeframe that we followed last year for the grand staircase. We're going to make sure that we do what we can to have the minimal effect on citizens, tourists, and the businesses that are around there. We're going to be taking up a total of 10 parking spaces for them to mobilize on. They're the closest to that stair structure. Like I said, we're going to have a pedestrian walkway where they can get to and from the firehouse and get from the bottom floor out to the alleyway. So it shouldn't be, it should be a minimal impact. All the handicap parking spots will still be open near the elevator, so we won't affect those. So we're hoping to have a dry and...
So by Christmas?
Yes.
Done?
After Christmas, 31st. But just to mention too, we, they're going to encapsulate that whole thing so that they can work through some of the weather requirements or weather that we see up here during the season. And in case there's a provision in there that we can, they can bring in a heater to help cure the paint and stuff. Some of the issues we had last year with the cold weather, with the paint needing to be above 50 degrees to cure, they'll be able to, with it encapsulated, they'll be able to apply heat to the structure and allow the paint and concrete to cure in place.
So six parking spots?
10, five floors.
10, okay, thank you.
On each floor.
I know the Prescott Downtown Partnership will be very interested in that tomorrow. So thank you.
Yes.
Councilman Lamerson?
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, you know, I'm not embarrassed that I can't be all things to all people all the time. It's the way it works, you know? We make decisions here based on the best information given at a time. And we have engineers and we have people that work for us, and they make recommendations and they bring things forward. You know, it's too bad that it didn't last longer. I agree with Councilman Blair that it's a public health and safety issue and it needs to be taken care of. It's just too bad we, it doesn't last longer than what it did. But if I remember correctly, at one time, we were sort of stuck in a bucket of trying to go with the lowest responsible bid. And sometimes, the cheapest isn't always the best, you know?
Absolutely.
When by statute or when by policy, you're stuck with buying the least that you can for the money, doesn't mean you're buying the best. It means you're buying the cheapest that you can. So I'm just sharing that with you.
And I would like to speak to our, the, I'm sorry, FCI Constructors. Last year, the project with them was phenomenal. They did a great job of rebuilding the grand staircase. And through the job order contract, we're able to select them, direct select them again as the contractor. Because to go through this process again with somebody else and trying to work through all the bugs, there's a lot of stuff that we didn't foresee happening. And they were great to work with, and they were on board and helped us through the process. We actually came in under budget on that last project last year, so they were a great company.
Well, hopefully, hopefully, the circumstance doesn't repeat itself. That's the best you can hope for. You make a decision and move on, so.
Yes, sir.
Other questions or comments from the council? Entertaining motion?
Mayor, I move to award city contract number 2019052.
Second.
Motion second, please vote.
Motion passes six zero.
Item 11E.
Item E, adopt resolution number 2018-1651 of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, delegating authority to the city clerk for approval of special event liquor licenses pursuant to Arizona Revised Statutes 4-203.02, farm winery festival licenses pursuant to Arizona Revised Statutes 4-203.03, and craft distillery festival licenses pursuant to Arizona Revised Statutes 4-205.11.
All right, thank you for that. Mr. Palladini?
I can address this, Mayor and Council, just briefly. The new law that goes into effect August 3th authorizes the council to do justice, delegate the approval of these special event liquor licenses and these farm festival and craft distillery festival licenses to the city clerk. It's my recommendation that we have numerous licenses, numerous special event licenses that go through council. They're all approved. They still have to go through the staff approval process, special event process. But the, frankly, the approval process by the council is really nothing more than a formality. We get zero public comment. It fills up the agendas significantly sometimes. We just think this is a more efficient way of doing it, of going through these approvals. And note that in the resolution, it still requires that the clerk give a report to the council every two weeks of all the licenses that the clerk approves. So you'll be kept in the loop on the events coming up, the licenses being approved. And again, because it's a resolution, if at some point in the future council decides that they want to bring it back to the council, you can always do a resolution and repeal this one. So our recommendation, if nothing else, for efficiency in running the meetings is to delegate the authority to the clerk.
Amen.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, I'd just like to comment. I think this is a great idea because often, groups have to wait for, to get their item on an agenda, and then they even sometimes have to go downtown to Phoenix to get it. So, yeah, it's a good deal. It will. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Councilwoman Scholl?
I think this is also a great idea. And our city clerk and our WE city clerk have done a really great job facilitating the liquor licenses. And Cindy's always prepared in our special events meetings and letting, letting the event host know where they are. And it can be a long process. And I know they literally do have to drive down to Phoenix sometimes and bug them about them. So I think this is just a step that gets it, gets it going a little bit faster.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, my concern was to make sure that these are properly vetted, they're looked at and reviewed appropriately. And as long as we can retain that review process internally and get the reports, I agree, it turns out to be quite a formality, but we should be able to retain the oversight and make sure they're done properly. So I support it as well.
Anyone else? Entertaining motion?
May I move to adopt resolution 2018-1651?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion passes six zero.
Item 11F.
Award city contract to Kim Lee Horn and Associates for professional engineering services for the Willow Lake Road and Prescott Lakes Parkway intersection improvement project.
Yes, this item, in studying it, I know Mayor Protem and myself have had some lengthy conversations with Michael Lamar, Craig Dotson, and Ian Mattingly, and concerned about the amount of money on a study. I guess I'd like to see if we might study, whether we need to study. I know that there's a need for a light on that intersection. It's a three-way intersection because of the school located nearby, Basis School. I know there does get to be a rather large backup on the left turn lane to get onto Willow Lake, and that can be very dangerous when you're trying to gamble if you've got enough gap to get out there. And so I know that, you know, my personal, unprofessional, non-engineer opinion is we need a light there. I just think when I was looking at the agenda and some of the things that were proposed in there, I just want to make sure it's right-sized, and I think some staff have agreed with me. So Mayor Protem?
Yes, and actually, when we started this conversation three years ago, we were, we met with the Bike Pedestrian, which is now Travel Committee, and, not Travel, sorry, Traffic Committee. And one of the first things we tackled was that we need a light at Prescott Lakes Parkway and Willow Lake Road. Many folks came in from Basis. We met, Phil, I think you were on the board then, and you came and met with us. And so we, I just want to assure people that we are fully supportive of a light there. My concern was $79,000 for outside contract, and then all we need is a light. And I just felt it was a little over-engineered, and so, and I really give credit to our staff because they, they are willing to look at this again, and let's see if we can scale this down, make it more affordable, and achieve the same results.
Councilman Good?
Yeah, I just thought this was kind of a head-scratcher. I think anybody who's had any experience with that intersection, especially during school hours, has known for a long time that we need a traffic signal there. You know, we had recently a pretty bad accident in that area, and I hate to see it takes some kind of an accident or some injury before someone says, yes, we agree, we need to have an intersection, a traffic signal. I know that we heard comments that it didn't meet the warrant standards, whatever those are.
That's changed. That's changed.
You know, maybe those warrant standards need to be reviewed because I think in some cases, especially like this one, this should have been done years ago.
Yeah, agreed. I was there a couple days ago just surveying the whole intersection, and I always assumed at school time, of course, it is very busy, but on this particular day, two days ago, there were six or seven cars at least backed up in that left turn lane, which surprised me a little bit. Councilman Blair?
School is out of session right now, too.
Right, yeah, there's no school going on, and yet there was a pretty good backup. Councilman Blair?
Well, I think public safety overrules a lot of times those standards and those warrants as far as I'm concerned. And we, as a body, have the right to recognize that we have an issue. We have employed by the city of Prescott professionals, which I assume they're professionals, and Ian Mattingly is an engineer, as Kent Sarvis is a traffic guy that's done hundreds of stoplights throughout this community. Frankly, I can't support spending $80,000 of taxpayers' money when we know that it needs to have a light there. The question becomes, do we have the ability in-house to engineer that intersection? I don't need somebody to tell me whether we need to have a light there or not. We need to have a light there. And I think it's germane to us as a council, if anybody's been out there, we know we need a light, and we just say, get it done, and we don't need to spend this extra $80,000. I think it's redundant to have a professional organization come in when we already have people on staff to tell us what we need. So, I'm not going to support it.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, one of my other concerns, and again, you know, when we talked to staff yesterday, they were very accommodating. My other concern is the timeline. This would not even come back from the engineering firm until March, so we, and you know, I think the sooner we get this done, the better. And Michael, I appreciate your help on that.
Most definitely. Mayor and council, staff is committed to revisiting this design. If the time permits, we'll do it in-house. If it doesn't permit, we're going to, again, probably send the design out to try to expedite this project. But what will come back to you will be a downscaled, right-sized design for this intersection that includes a light but might not include a lot of the other amenities associated with what was proposed for this design.
Councilman Lamerson?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Billy, and I agree with Blair. We need a light, go put up a light. I mean, you don't have to be a genius to figure it out. Public safety comes first, period. Just put the light up, and we don't need to study it.
Based on this conversation, Mr. Palladini, what is the best way forward here? Can we vote on this and vote it down? We can pull it? Can we table it? What's?
I think you just pull it, Mayor.
Okay.
It seems there's a consensus to pull it. I think you just pull it off the agenda and bring it back on a different day if there's an outside firm. If it's done in-house, it wouldn't need council approval.
We need a motion to do that? Or do I just pull it from the agenda?
You're the mayor, pull it.
That's your high pay grade.
There's no objection.
Okay, I would ask that we pull item 11F from the regular agenda, and again, want to reiterate, Craig, to your folks, we appreciate all the work you do, and especially accommodating us on this conversation, on this agenda item. Thank you. Before we adjourn, a quote from Amelia Earhart. "The most difficult thing is the decision to act. The rest is merely tenacity. The fears are paper tigers. You can do anything you decide to do. You can act to change and control your life, and the procedure, the process, is its own reward." This meeting is adjourned.